I'd like to call the order. Town North Branford, Town Council meeting dated Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. At 7:07 PM? Michelle, if you take work call? Oh, salute to the flag, I'm sorry. Salute to the flag, please.
Let's salute to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands as, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice strong.
Okay. Michelle, if you take work call, please?
Mayor McMellon.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Abelson.
He just stepped out for a call.
Okay. Councilor Yandeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Goode.
Here.
Councilor Mace.
Here.
And Councilor Bleachy.
Here.
All right. Accept the motion to approve the amendments for the previous meeting dated December 7th, 2021, for WPCA and Town Council.
So moved.
All approved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Agenda item three, reports of committees, boards and commissions. First, A, Economic Development Commission.
There was no meeting since our last council meeting.
Okay. All right. Parks and Recreation?
There was no meeting, but just an update. Our last meeting, we made a motion to approve a new stove for Park and Rec up to $10,000. They have purchased one, it is installed, and I believe the actual cost of the stove was under $5,000 in our department's, Public Works installed it. So there might be some additional costs, but it was well under the $10,000 limit. So it's in and working.
Thank you. Police Commission?
The Police Commission met on December 13th. The chief talked about the need to replace the next-gen server, which is on the agenda later on tonight. He also spoke about issues with the current building. There's an overage in the 311 account facilities and maintenance by approximately, at this point, it's by approximately $2,900, and that's because of problems with the HVAC system, the need to replace some dehumidifiers because the humidity in that building was so high that they needed to put some dehumidifiers in. And also, there was a $1,400 in electrical work that was unanticipated. Again, there are problems with that building. Until they get in a new one, they're probably going to run into some more issues. He also announced the retirement of Officer Farucci, which is kind of sad to see, and he read a number of letters of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Fire Commission?
So the Fire Commission met on December 2nd. Just an update, they received, I believe last month I made you guys aware, but they received their engine three. And I just wanted to, I know a topic of conversation in the past has been, you know, asking the fire department to give their apparatus back to the town so that we could sell them and not have to maintain them and incur the additional costs. The Fire Commission has asked to keep that apparatus active as it would be the only backup in town for all three firehouses. They're going to keep it, all the tools on it, keep it active and up to date so that if one does go down in another department, that can swing into service. And I know, I think Company One's engine is ending the narrative or coming to the end of its lifespan. So I think it's a good idea, and I would encourage everybody to support them in that and let them keep that one as a backup for the town. It also does to, it also does affect businesses and people's insurance ratings as well. So by having a backup and having another one on standby, it will also help keep insurance costs down as well. The other thing, too, there was a vote, or actually, the chairman called multiple times to the Fire Commission if there was any motions for nominating a fire chief. All times, there were no motions, so there were no motions made on a fire chief. Afterwards, they asked for any other motions. A motion was made to make Anthony Esposito acting fire chief starting the beginning of January, I think January 5th, but the beginning of January. That carried unanimously, and it looks like Anthony will be acting in an unpaid capacity until they can find a new fire chief.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, E, Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Item F, Planning and Zoning Commission.
I did not attend.
Item G, Finance Subcommittee.
We need to appoint some members from the council, so until we do that, we don't have any meetings scheduled at this time. So we should think about that for our January meeting and also liaisons, you know, fill any liaisons or if people want to stay, if they have.
Do we know if the current members that are present on the council want to maintain or if they want to make some changes?
Well, Tom and I were on it, and Joe Fawnin. Those were the three for the Finance Subcommittee, and I would like to stay on it.
Okay.
So we would look for one more member.
I would take that if someone else wants to, doesn't want to, but if not, we could certainly have that conversation.
Yeah, we could have up to four without being a quorum.
Okay.
So.
Okay. We can have that conversation and come back in the next agenda, next meeting.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right. Item H, Permanent Project Building Committee. Start with NBHS update, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Al Rose is not coming tonight. He typically, he doesn't think he's a spokesperson for that group. He did text me and just said briefly that things are going well for the high school and that they also had made a decision on the PD conceptually to go with the general contractor as they did before, so they did take action on that at their last meeting. But I do know that there are some members from the Permanent Project Building Committee here. Also, Rusty Malek is online via Zoom, but in the interest of time, unless they've got something burning to say, it is moving. We are not meeting again until January 3rd unless, of course, there's a special meeting or something that pops up. But I knew there are members here that may want to speak to any particular item.
Well, maybe Rusty can just give us an update on.
Yeah, Rusty, would you mind giving us a quick update, just brief?
Rusty, can you hear that? They were looking just for a brief update on the high school project.
Construction, you know, foundations are going, have gone in. You know, we're doing plumbing and electrical work, all the low slab work that is, that's ongoing. There are significant amounts of submittals being, you know, sent to us, for the design team to review and then get back to the contractors. That process is happening. Along with that, you see comes a lot of RFIs, questions about certain things or if there's changes that need to occur because there are supply chain issues or other such issues. So that work is progressing as well. We, it's called owner-architect, we see them meetings every Tuesday at 10 o'clock, so we had one this morning at 10:00. And, you know, we basically look at the schedule, we'll look at any impact items, if there's any changes that need to occur. All those issues are discussed. The clerk of the works is there, as well as the entire, you know, representatives from the design team as well. So so far, it's progressing really well. We have no complaints, and the, you know, the team is working really well together, which is refreshing. And of course, the building committee is, we report back to them, they're a very hands-on building committee, which is different, but also good in the sense that they've got members that are very knowledgeable about certain trades and are able to, you know, give us feedback, identify items if they see something. So I would say as a team, we're all working well, and, you know, I'm very pleased with progress.
Great. Thanks, Rusty. We appreciate it. We're looking forward to its ongoing progression. I had the opportunity to stop by and see Kevin Gilbane in the trailer the other day, and he showed me some aerial photos, and it's exciting to see the layout. You know, the weather has certainly helped us with getting some of the groundwork done, and we can see the whole layout of where the school's going to be, at least the first phase. So it's pretty neat to see it coming together so quickly and appropriately, and I think those members.
Is there some way that we can get information like that either posted on the website, on the town's web, just so that the public can also see that type of progress?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I think this is a fantastic idea. Rusty, is that something that you could talk to Kevin about? You know, say, who we see, weekly, bi-weekly? Say, weekly, throw a photo or two to Michael, and we can have that posted to the town website for, you know, for the purposes of the public seeing the progress?
Rusty, were you able to hear that?
I thought I heard that if there are a way of posting progress to the town website, is that?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, a photo or two.
In a photo or report, just some, you know, information in terms of.
I don't think, I don't think we're asking him to post it.
Certainly, I mean.
Yeah, not for you to post, just for you to convey to us internally to post.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, especially photographs will be the most telling, and right now, it's mostly excavation, you know, site work, you know, it's work that's sort of under the slab and so on, so it's not very, you know, people look at those images, there's not a lot to see unless we do an overview of the site and they can see, begin to see the footprint of the building. But I think what we can do is develop a, maybe there's a way we can do some shots that we keep taking from the same vantage point so that you simply see the progress of the work going on, almost like time-lapse photography.
Right.
And, you know, we do an update, but we can also write a brief update, let's say, every month that can get posted so that the community at large can see that as well.
Yeah, I think that's great, Rusty. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Like I said, that aerial is impressive. As well as when I was there, Kevin and some of the folks from QA&amp;M were doing a class in the auditorium for some of the high school students going through some construction management and other aspects of this project. So we're not only building a building, but we're also bringing a great deal of knowledge to these kids that may be the future construction managers that North Branford will hire for other projects. So that's a pretty neat thing as well. Yeah, that'd be great to have those updates. All right, thank you. Any updates on the PD that we want to talk about? Are we good there?
Yeah, I think we're good. We're going to have, reach out to the architect, make sure that, you know, they're on board coming back on the 3rd and to get that moving.
Great.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I ask Dave Plumball a question?
You sure? Sure.
Dave, can I ask you, I had heard that last week at your meeting there that the, our clerk of the works might have left the job or walked out and might have lost our clerk of the works?
No, it's been resolved. The clerk of the works was just under some pressure and rather not get into it all right now, but it certainly has been worked out and details have been clarified. I know they've reached out to Mike Paulus, cleared the air on history and happiness. So we're good, permanent projects, all set.
Harmony and happiness. Good. That's great.
Yes, as well.
Great.
Apologize if you guys heard anything that was out of bounds, but it's working itself out and cleared the air.
All right. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Okay, on to our last item in Section 3, I, Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
That's basically going to be our presentation tonight.
Okay. That's great, so we'll have that presentation. All right. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 4, Town Manager Report. Mr. Paulus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are just three items briefly, more informational, obviously, we continue to have the report and update on COVID, so I'll lead with that. You have in your packet, in addition to what was submitted for the packet from East Shore District, I also included the governor's release of numbers with respect to statewide numbers, so that's the two-page that you have at your desk as well. So if we cut to page, I think it's page four, page five, where North Branford is listed, you can see the graph there, the monthly graph. It shows that for just the two weeks, first two weeks of December, we already have 93 positive cases, which eclipses the last previous spike, which was August, 90 cases in August, so we've eclipsed that in the first two weeks, and it is tracking probably to go higher than what we had back in April. As you see, we had 118 positive cases back in April. So unfortunately, it sounds like Omicron is taking over as the dominant variant, although maybe not officially in Connecticut. I think that's the projection, unfortunately. I was trying to get some information today on our hospitalizations, and I don't have that yet, so if that comes, I'll send that out via email. No fatalities that I'm aware of, but it is concerning, and those numbers are rising. I also included for you the COVID-19 vaccination clinics printout of those that are coming up that include boosters. So we're doing what we can to continue to promote the clinics for both vaccinations and boosters, and if you see a couple pages later on, when we talk about where we are, we are, as a town, reached a full vaccination level of 73.95%, and on the first dose, nearly 80%. So those are, you know, continue to creep up ever so slightly, which is, you know, a positive indicator as we battle this strain.
Thank you. Continue to encourage her to encourage our townspeople to be safe and stay healthy.
Mike, was there any indication, I mean, I know it's, it's the variant that's taken over, but I'm also hearing that it's not as potent as previous, you know, say as the Delta, and that people aren't getting as sick from it. Did they give you any indication as to how that was playing out?
Largely, that is, with one caveat, I believe the indication is that if you're vaccinated or vaccinated in booster, that the infection is milder, but still very concerning for anyone unvaccinated.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we'll continue to monitor that. We have another call Thursday morning.
Great, thank you.
Next item is just an FYI for those ratepayers out there in the Regional Water Authority territory. They are announcing and have been that they are changing the bill, billing system from a quarterly to monthly, so just more of an FYI. There is a monthly billing frequently asked questions sheet in your packet, and we're certainly trying to get the word out there so nobody's caught unaware of the change that they're making. So just thought that would be important to pass along.
Thank you.
And lastly, just item C is just that the rec department has got the grant for their smaller passenger van, which should help them navigate and be more nimble with, and flexible and diversified in terms of how the programs they do and what they do by having a smaller vehicle in their fleet, which I think now certainly complements all that they do and gives them great flexibility.
Is this a matching grant? Is there any matching funds for this? Do we have to provide any matching funds?
Negative.
Okay.
No matching funds, but the director indicated, and as I said in the memo, there might be some additional, unknown yet at this point in terms of any potential fit-out or adjustments they might need to make.
I have a question. Mike, in this memo, it says the grant of $60,000 will be enough to purchase the vehicle, but there are likely additional costs. So is there a grant or there's not a grant?
There is a grant, and the grant covered, there's no matching to purchase the vehicle, and they'll get, they'll take receipt of it, and after five years, the title is released under the program. But what I'm saying there is that there might be some, you know, decal-ing or some type of adjustment they need to make within the vehicle, much like, I think it's analogous to police cruisers in terms of changing over outfitting, but I'm not sure the detail yet at this point or what that would, what that would, what that cost would be.
All right, so the grant for $60,000 purchases the vehicle, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And then there's additional cost to outfit it.
Potentially, yeah.
According to your memo.
Yeah.
And then there's a five-year contract requirement by the state. The five-year contract is for what?
Well, we have to, we have to operate within the confines of the agreement with the state for public, you know, transport within the, within the program that they went for under the grant. And so as long as we adhere to everything within that grant in the five years, then they release title, is my understanding.
Okay. All right, I got it now. Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion to accept this Section 5310 grant? Because it says this certifies that blank. So does the council have to accept this, or is this just for informational purposes?
Informational purposes, yeah. I don't believe, and if not, if that's, I don't believe we have to. I think it's just for informational purposes that we'll.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 5, Community Events and Presentations. Mr. Esposito?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You want to go from there? We've got to bring Hector.
So tonight, on our continuing quest to renew our website, we have Hector from Civic Plus on the Zoom to review some of his products and address any questions you may have with some of his examples of his websites. Hector, if you can kick to like 10 or 20 minutes, that'd be great. We have a full agenda tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you to everybody who is allowing us to be able to do our presentation. A matter of introduction, my name is Hector Ortega with Civic Plus, and I do have on our team as well Justin Hammond on our call as well. He's one of our solutions engineers, so in case there's some more nitty-gritty questions that I can't answer, he's a wonderful resource for us. Michael, would it be okay if I'm able to share my screen? I have a very quick slide deck. With that in mind, though, it looks like the permissions have been enabled. I appreciate that. So give it just a second, and you should see my screen now.
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. All right. So here at Civic Plus, one of our products that we have is Civic Engage. And a matter of introduction, what we have, you should see now our actual website. So under the Products tabs, we are most known for our website. You'll notice that at the top left-hand corner here is Civic Engage, which is our website design and hosting, which is what I'll present here in just a few moments. But furthermore, as the needs of local governments evolved and you needed more online capabilities, we started to amplify our portfolio. So you'll notice we also have Civic Rec, which is recreation management, civic ready, emergency and routine communications, civic clerk agenda and meeting management, and so forth and so on. We really do have a wide array of different services to offer for local government. And just a quick distinction, we do only deal with local government, so all of our solutions were designed specifically to meet the day-in, day-out activities that staff members have to do, as well as on the front end, visitors say of the website, making it easy for them to find the information they're looking for. We really do live in a day and age where you have to be able to find what you're looking for in, say, one to two clicks at the absolute most, and that's exactly what we want to do in developing your website. I don't know of many folks that want to go to a municipal website just to pass the time. They have something in mind, they're looking for, and they want to be able to achieve that very quickly. And on a number of different devices, whether that is a mobile device, say, a phone, maybe a tablet, or even their desktop computer. So all of our actual websites are completely mobile responsive. They will adjust very nicely, and we'll actually showcase that in just a few moments. But in terms of Civic Engage, we really do want to simplify your web management and amplify your civic engagement. A little bit of us, we do have over 4,000 different local government clients, over 100,000 users are utilizing our system, and a great number here, over 250 million people have been impacted from using our systems as well. In terms of what we're looking to do, we really are looking to accelerate the digital expectations of citizens, especially in the day and age that we're living in right now in terms of COVID, really being able to do anything you're needing online. One of the big things is bringing your online, sorry, bringing your services online. So say, instead of having to come into Town Hall and fill out a form, they could just do that online instead of having to maybe mail that in or having to come out as well. Some nice impacting statistics here in terms of the digital transformation that we're going through, but more than anything, we want to make sure that we are a good fit for you in terms of anywhere, right? Nowadays, you want to be able to work from anywhere, anytime, and any place, provide information through a wide array of different avenues. Also, greater need for transparency and regular communications, as well as combating the spread of misinformation, which seems to be sometimes a case where, say, a social media platform is stating one thing, Town Hall, website saying something else, and, you know, they may have heard something from somebody else. So anyhow, really bringing all these different avenues to life is what we want to be able to do. So being able to access all of that information anytime, anywhere is a huge, huge selling point for us. Really, that's what we want to be able to do, is enable those that are visiting your website to find anything and anything they're looking for at any time, at any point in time, right? They might not necessarily do it during the day, they might do it in the evening when they're off of work, maybe sitting on the couch, maybe wanting to sign up their kiddos for a recreation activity, so they're not sitting at home, say, during winter break or during summer vacation or something along those lines. And here, what we want to do with our platform is we want to get more done, we want to engage our citizens, we want to be transparent with the information that we're posting, we want it to be convenient in terms of accessing that information, as well as regular communication, so whether that's notifications, custom forms, alerts, news feeds, anything along those lines. And then we also keep security on the forefront of our mind with all of our websites. We do live in a day and age where we have to be careful because there are individuals out there, organizations as well, that are looking to take down municipal websites or just put information out there that would mislead the public, and we keep that in mind as we're doing all of our information as well. Let's skip through this slide just for the sake of time. Really, the peace of mind, user-friendly, intuitive websites, we want to make it department-specific modules and features, extensive functionality for all teams, say, document management, online forms and payments, communication and engagement tools, and much, much more. But with all of this in mind, Justin, I'm going to see if you happen to have a website or two that you could maybe showcase on the front end and be able to just talk through very quickly what it is that we like to bring to the forefront, if that's okay?
Sure, yeah.
Stop sharing so you can.
All right, we should see a neighbor of yours, Madison, connect on the screen?
Yes.
All right, so I have a few examples, some close, some far, so we won't drone on too much here, but, you know, what I'm trying to articulate is really how do we take everything that Hector just mentioned and bring that to life for you? So it is a white-glove approach through implementation, we're migrating your content, we're helping understand maybe what the website's doing for you today, or maybe even more importantly, what your website's not doing for you today, so that we can help build out the navigation, help build out quick-hit items that people can get to very quickly. One, two, three clicks or less is really the goal on getting folks to what they're looking for, and that might be in, you know, the mega menus here that we point out. If I understand how local government works and is organized, I've got department menus here that I can go through. If I don't, just have a task in mind, how do I accomplish something that I came here for? Navigation's one primary focus of that, our search is another, so I type in something like water, COVID-19, whatever the topics are at hand, it's going to give me some suggestions. And as a user, I can also go to those full results and filter that out even further, empowering the residents to find the content that they're looking for without picking up the phone, without having to wait in line, you know, seamless experience essentially. And so we do that by, you know, helping you organize your content, making it easier for your content creators to build out that content, and then ultimately, as we've been talking about, getting those residents to that content as quickly as possible. So the homepage is going to showcase top items that are important to you and your residents. That can. can be news, that could be a calendar of events. I, as a visitor, can come out here and see what's not only on the homepage, but what the entire site has to offer for all the categories and all the organization for the events that are interesting to me, right? So I can say, show me everything, update this, and get all of the calendar events basically pushed to my, to my phone through a subscription. You know, notify me is another great tool to get information out in the hands of your residents and citizens as well. So if you think about the internet, in the 90s, everyone went out to the website, consumed that information, went back out to the website, hit refresh. There was no push notifications, right? Everything is pushed, thumbs up, and, you know, followed straight to everyone's device. Notify me is exactly that for your website. So as you guys go out and create events, upload documents, agendas perhaps, populate news, alerts, all of that, then not only is published to the website, but then pushed and published straight to folks via email or text as well. And not only are they getting it how they want it, but they're getting exactly what they asked for. So it's not a catch-all newsletter. It's exactly the topics that they have indicated are important to them. So as far as, you know, building this out, implementing it, and maintaining it, it's a hands-on approach for Civic Plus. We're going to help you make sure you maintain ADA compliance for folks that need that, making sure that it's accessible, not only for folks with that, but mobile devices and how people visit the website, and when they visit, and what they want to accomplish. And we'll also ensure that it is mobile-friendly and follows our best practices. As Hector mentioned, we've been doing websites for over 25 years. We have 4,500 clients. We've done this a few times, and we have best practices to prove that. But certainly, this is your website, so we'll make sure it's exactly what you want before it goes live. I have an opportunity, or I can show a little bit of the backend for content creators, but pause here for, for your lead, if you think we want to show that or not, or make sure you guys don't have any questions.
I think this looks great. I appreciate you bringing us through this. Any questions from the board?
I have just one. Ordinarily, when you guys work with a town, do you have a designated IT person in town who does the backup on the website, content management, or is that something that you guys do in collaboration with them? And if not, do you train up people to use your systems? I imagine it's proprietary stuff, right, inside in your dashboard?
Yep. I think I heard that. So you're kind of asking who you, who you might designate, and who we might designate to work on this project?
Well, how do you, how do you work with the personnel in the town? Do you usually manage the content yourself, or do you train up somebody locally that is in the town to do?
I see. So yeah, as mentioned, we'll implement, get the site alive with your existing content, right, and train whoever you want to basically update that content. If you have a single person or a handful of individuals, we'll train whoever that needs to be. Realistically, the system is built out, so anyone can update the website if needed. But obviously, we'll set the permissions based on your lead to understand who you would want to have access to do that. But it is, it is self-maintained, so to speak. We provide the tools and the assets to allow you to make changes as, as things happen.
All right, so one or two super-users, other content providers, and then is there someone that can be contacted from your organization that can help if there's bumps in the road, or if there's questions? Is there some type of customer service manager or relationship manager?
Absolutely, yeah. So during the building-out process, you'll have a project manager. That person will be your main point of contact during the, the build-out. After you go live, then you'll have an account manager, and that person will be an individual assigned to you. They'll be regionalized, so they'll be working probably with Madison as well and other neighbors. So if any type of localized things happen, they'll be in the, in the know and, and understand how your neighborhood works essentially. So that person will be your main point of contact for anything short-term and strategic that you might be thinking about focusing on. In addition to that, though, random one-off things, we have a fantastic help center. So if I'm going to navigate here quickly to our backend system, I have a help button that will give me contextual suggestions for what I might need. I can ask a question here, which is going to take me straight into our help center articles that walk you through exactly what you need. So if you want to add a slideshow to a webpage, how do you do that? Here's every screenshot. Here's a, a video to walk you through that. If that's not your style, and you want to talk to a human being, we've got a get-in-touch button, which then allows you to either leave a message or start a live chat with an individual in our home office in Manhattan, Kansas. And that is supported 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for any, any, any question for any user that's creating content on the site.
Okay. All right, we have a question from Counselor Adelson?
Yeah. So who does the backup? Like, where do you, do you keep it on your server? Do we, do we keep it on our server? So if, let's just, as an example, somebody, we have our webmaster that's updating the website and it crashes, and they have no access to what was built. Do you keep a copy on your servers?
Yeah, we can provide you the exact details of our service level agreement, but the, the main gist of it is we're 99.9% uptime. So downtime might be, you know, an update to the software, something like that. That's usually late night, Saturday evenings, early morning, Sunday. So we've got a 99% uptime, even including maintenance. But we also have an SLA in regards to any type of loss of data. So if your website is brought down or it goes down, then you'll have, I think it's four or eight hours. I'm going to have to look back at the SLA for you, but we have basically guaranteed recovery time and recovery points. And that basically means your data will, will be no longer than, I think it's eight hours old, and your website will be no, would be down no longer than four hours. And those are obviously worst-case scenarios. I don't remember the last time we were down more than a few minutes. In fact, we've maintained a 99.9% uptime for four years.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, no, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we appreciate your presentation and look forward to hearing more from the, the board and talking about this, and we'll, we'll talk soon.
Well, thanks so much. You, everybody as well. Take care. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I would like to make two motions to amend the agenda. The first one is Item 7B, and it's appointment from the Board of Education to the Permanent Project Building Committee of Zap Canada.
Motion's on the table. We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by... Counselor Downs?
Counselor Downs, okay, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
And the next motion is to add Agenda Item 9L, and this is to move the Stanley T. Williams Roof Project to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Motion accepted. I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Downs.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Mr. Mayor, is it, is it possible to move up Paul Zito's presentation at this point?
Yeah, I think that's viable. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
To agenda? Okay.
Need a motion?
I'll accept the motion to...
I'll make a motion to move it up to a, actually, it would be six. I'm going to actually be before six.
5B.
So 5, we'd call it...
What?
5B.
You call it 5B?
5B, okay.
Be fair? Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion. By Counselor Diamond, seconded. By Counselor Mace?
Yeah, I just, I don't think you need to call it 5B. It's already listed as an item. You're just going to take that item up now.
Okay, so we'll take up the...
Your item there already?
It's 9D.
It's 9...
9D, okay.
If I could also just make one correction, it's actually a discussion and action on radio project, not cell tower project.
Okay, make note of that, and changing it to radio?
It's radio project, not cell tower project. I just noticed that, sorry.
Oh, no, we're, thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that update. All right, so we should be fine to move it to D, and we'll come back to Agenda, Item 6 after that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can, if you're forwarding, as Counselor Angel already asked, to the permanent projects for the Stanley T., for the roof project, can we get all of any information prior to that at least forward to us?
There's, there's really no information...
Nothing's as of now?
Right. We're just, we're moving it now, and we just did the RFP for the architect, so we wanted you to have it before that all starts, so you, so you get it right from the beginning.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wabo. Okay, moving to Agenda Item, skipping to, from Agenda 9D, we'll take on discussion and action of the radio project and presentation by Mr. Paul Zito via Zoom.
Yeah, Paul, you're on.
Okay. I'm going to need screen sharing on this also.
Okay, I think, I think it is released, but let me check. Yeah, you should have, you should have access.
I'm good.
Okay, great.
Okay, you should see my screen now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I was asked to do this briefing for the benefit of the new members of the board, to kind of bring them up to speed as to where we're at on this project. So that being said, I'm just trying to get my, my sidebar out of the way here. That should work, okay. So what is this project about? We're trying to improve communications for the public safety community and for the taxpayers of the town of North Branford. In doing so, we want to increase inter and intra-operability between other towns and within the town departments of the town of North Branford. Where possible, we want to do cost savings through shared infrastructure. The whole project is, is, evolves around not only interoperability, but upgrading outdated and unsupported equipment. And we want to achieve scalability in the coverage. We don't want to have to throw away the system and start over again in 10 years. The initial, the current system was installed in 2009 for approximately $350,000. It was enhanced in 2011 for $75,000. It's a three-site, what we call analog simulcast system for fire and police. It's a single-site system for public works. They don't need the in-building coverage that the police and fire need, so that's why they only have a single site. The systems are rapidly reaching end of life. In the case of the police department, their consoles are almost to the point of being at end of life. I would suspect in the next year, they will be out of support. Fire and police subscribers, that's what we call mobile and portables, are reaching end of life, and the frequency of repairs are increasing. The present system has three transmitter sites with associated equipment, ADA, Parsonage Hill, Reed's Gap, Commerce Drive. There's two additional receiver sites at Evergreen Woods and the North Branford Intermediate School. All of these sites are tied together with T1 leased lines. To the layperson, that may not mean much, but to people in the industry, whereas they used to be the de facto way of connecting sites together to get information back and forth, they are now become very unreliable. Why do we want to do this now? Well, as I alluded to before, current parts for the system, availability is waning, therefore serviceability is hard. Current system is becoming very unreliable, especially with those T1 lines. Relies heavily on copper telco lines. That's what I referred to as T1 lines. Typically, when it rains, you know you're going to have trouble with, with the system. Now's a favorable time for system migration. The state offered us the use of their system, which is a cost savings, and also, it's the end of the year, and we caught Motorola with trying to make deals at the end of the year for their, for their numbers, for their stockholders. So what was decided upon by the committee after many, many meetings and back-and-forth questions, we actually designed the system for the fire department, for their needs. Police falls right in behind them. They don't have as great a needs for in-building coverage that the fire department has in mutual aid coverage. And of course, public works being a street-oriented service, they kind of fall in third behind police. So this was not done in a vacuum. This is well-vetted with all the department heads and constituents within their, those departments. So the statewide radio system is used primarily by the state police that was put in some 20 years ago and updated on a regular basis. Just two weeks ago, they got another huge bond allotment to, to expand the system even further. Since it was installed, and especially in the last few years, other agencies and municipalities have joined the system. It's a, what we call a Phase II P25 system, which allows for improved network efficiency. Basically, what that means is P25 is the standard that is now used throughout the country for interoperable and reliable radio systems. You can't get a grant if it's not radios for a P25 compatible system. We would share infrastructure with the state. This reduces the upgrade costs and operating costs. The upgrades benefit all users, and the health of the system is monitored 24/7/365 by the Network Control Center or the NCC located at police headquarters. They watch hundreds of thousands of alarms. They have alarm systems to watch alarm systems. They can tell you when a door gets opened. They can tell you the temperature in the room. They can tell you how much fuel is in the ground for a generator. So what does North Branford have to expand in order to get the coverage that they need for the communication systems? We would leverage the sites that the state is building now, or has already built. And it says new sites will be leveraged. The state is building a site on the Branford Line on 95. We will get to use that. That will be melded into the system at no cost to the town. It allows the town to reduce the sites from the five sites they now have down to two sites. Less equipment and less electricity. I mean, it's just phenomenal, the amount of savings it would be on that. The town would be responsible for the sites that they add to augment the coverage in town. That would be two sites. So you would have a service contract through the state with Motorola, or with Motorola for those two sites. And that includes lifecycle, which we'll go into shortly. The system is scalable. It allows additional users and channels with that additional infrastructure. One of the problems that we have with the communication system now is the, there's no additional channels available. They've all been taking up, taken up in Connecticut, New England. Fire department wanted another channel. We couldn't find one for them. By being on a trunk system on the state shared resources, we just call the NCC and say, we need another talk group. We give them the information on it, and they turn it up. It's that fast. It also allows, allows for much better coverage than you have on your present communication systems, whether it's police, fire, ambulance, public works. It's coverage at 98% street level in New Haven County, and in some cases, units are allowed to roam statewide. So what are the pros and cons of what we're doing? Well, radio system coverage, a pro radio system coverage throughout New Haven County and statewide refers, requires North Branford, North Branford to build two sites instead of five or six sites. Requires North Branford to build two sites instead of five or six sites to get the coverage that you need. And the system improvements benefit everyone who use the system. The cons, you're tied to the state upgrade pathway. What that means is you need to maintain the equipment to its present release in order to be able to follow the lifecycle path that is laid out by Motorola. System or configuration changes require state approval. Again, you just can't add a channel or a talk group. You have to go to the state and say, "I need this. Here's why I need it." They have never said no. They just want to know who's using the system and what it's being used for so that it doesn't get overloaded. The Motorola quote for this was originally almost $4.5 million because it's the year end and we were able to consolidate some pricing. It's 3.947820, which is a fantastic price, and it's all turnkey. So what's the future of the fleet? Well, this is a spattering of the radios that are offered. I threw this in here because I just want to point out that these are not $25 radios. These are hardened public safety radios. The highway department would not have the hardened radios, but they would have heavy-duty radios. They just don't need the public safety-grade radios and the costs that's associated with that for a Public Works vehicle. So what's the scope of the project? We want to replace the whole radio systems, everybody's radio system and their subscribers. The subscribers all have to be done because the radio system is a different signaling format. It's the newest computer technology. Fire department, I won't bore you with going down this list, but you know, we've taken care of the needs of the fire department, which includes digital pagers. We've taken care of the police department needs, which includes two consoles. Public Works, they're getting six portables and 36 mobile units. We have not fully vetted the headcount on these. These are what were supplied by the departments. We added a couple where necessary. I know we're missing a couple for the fire department, but we've accounted for that in our funding. So scalability of the future of this system. Able to add more talk groups or channels as needed. It's a standard-based system. We're able to purchase subscriber units from multiple manufacturers after this initial purchase. A well-defined lifecycle cost. The way this lifecycle works is you pay on a yearly basis for upgrade and lifecycle. And every two years, you have the most current release or the factory release that's available at that time. So really, what that means is you have a new recertified system every two years. Unlike what you have now where you have a 10- or 15-year-old system that has been broke, has been fixed when it broke, but has never been updated. So this is a protection for really the investment. It eliminates the present site rental costs. And the savings from that cost can be applied to what we refer to as SUA2 cost, which is the lifecycle cost. So it's the lifecycle is covered on a yearly basis.
Paul, do we have those numbers?
We're there. Somebody have a question?
Yes, do we have the numbers between the lifecycle costs as to what we're saving from the rental costs? That's gonna be obviously an important aspect to understand.
I have a chart later on.
Right, thank you.
So this is basically the coverage in the town of North Branford in what we call a light commercial building, which is all except for the northwest, yeah, northwest corner of town, just about everything is light commercial buildings. So we've pretty much covered the town. You can see up here is the Northford Tower. Down here is what we refer to as the Tilcon Tower. These towers are being built by other entities at no charge to this town. The Northford Tower is no charge at all. There is a recurring monthly charge that is much less than you're paying now for the site over on Parsonage Hill. But that, you know, we have a contract that says that that will be reduced by, I believe it's $300 or $400 a month as other cell phone companies go on that. And there is the great potential of that being reduced to zero. So cost breakdown, infrastructure and subscribers, that was that $3,947,000 number. $92,000, almost $93,000 for digital pagers for the fire and EMS. Ancillary equipment. They did not include console furniture in the cost of the new building, the new police facility, so we included that in this budget. We need a login recorder interface for the login recorder that's there now. There's no need to replace that. It still has many years of good service left in it. Recurring annual costs, maintenance and lifecycle. And this is the chart that was asked for. So maintenance cost is included in the first year. You start paying for the maintenance and lifecycle in the second year. So really, in year three, you are scheduled for a major system upgrade. Let me explain what that upgrade is. It's hardware, software, and all the labor involved. So if you need a new computer, a new router, a new server, because it's either not supported by the manufacturer anymore or Motorola has changed to a better mousetrap, that's at no cost to you. They take the old equipment out, hand it to you, and say, "This is yours. Goodbye," and you have a current release system. These are not small numbers, but they are a protection on your investment. Now, I think somebody asked if I had numbers to compare to what you're saving now. I do not. I can supply them. I know that you're probably paying now, oh, I don't know. Chief Halloran, what is the Parsonage Hill site costing now?
So right now, right now, it's $60,000 a year for lease plus some other maintenance costs associated with it, so you know, maybe another...
So it's up there?
Yeah, another $10,000 or so.
So 60,000 to 70,000 a year? To give you an idea of the municipalities that are on the system. I haven't updated this list, but it changes almost on a daily basis. People on the left, Norwalk is about to go on it, so we can take them off the MOU build-out stage. Bridgeport, they'll have their own system, but it will be tied to the state. Fairfield is the same way. Trumbull Fire is going on the system, actually is on the system, but police is staying on their own system. And just two weeks ago, Wilton decided to join the system. So I probably have this labeled wrong. It's not really a request. It's what we're going to expend so far. But we've got the cost of the system at $3,947,000. There is a cost to decommission the old equipment and take it off the towers that we're not using anymore. The fire and EMS pages, ancillary equipment, project management and administrative fees. That comes to $4,154,508. I threw a 15% contingency in there. That is to cover, normally, we put 10% in. Contingency, if you don't spend it, goes back to the town. The extra 5% is to cover the changing subscriber list for the fire department. And police, if we missed any, but I know we missed a couple in the fire department. So the total project cost, we have a 15% contingency, is $4,777,684. We requested $5.5 million for this project, so we're coming in under budget. And that's all I've got for you. If anyone has any questions, we can entertain some questions.
So how does the half a million dollars in radios that was secured through a grant by the fire department, where does that figure into this?
That figures into this. What I didn't show on the slides is that we have revenue in there or dollars in there to upgrade those radios to the, with the options that are needed to work on the trunk radio system.
Was that the 79 upgrades?
I can hear.
He asked, deputy mayor was asking if that was the 79 upgrades. Portable upgrade, is it portable, 79 portable?
Yes, yes.
It is, okay.
And that's included in the 4.7 million?
And that cost is included in the 4.7 million figure, Paul?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
What's the estimated cost? Every two years, we have to upgrade again. Whereabouts are we on that, that we're gonna be pushed by the state to do so? If we're losing the ability to be autonomous with our other three towers that we have?
The upgrade, so what happens is you pay that, Paul, if you can hear me, correct me if I say anything that's wrong, but this is my understanding, is that you pay yearly maintenance fees on the system. And what you get for that, those yearly maintenance fees, are you get every two years, an upgrade included. You don't have to pay additionally every two years for those upgrades. It's included in that maintenance fee that you're paying.
It's those numbers up there.
Well, if you, is my screen still being shared?
Yeah, it is, it is, and your figures are up, the maintenance.
Okay, so really, the maintenance costs are on the top line. And then what we call the lifecycle or that upgrade cost is on the bottom line.
That's pretty flat.
So, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, that those first five years are included in the initial purchase, correct?
Yes.
So that gives us time to develop a sinking fund or whatever it might be to the future years of...
That's correct.
So the 4.77 includes all of those?
That's included in the initial purchase.
First five years are part of that? That's part of the 4.77? And with not in addition to the contingency?
Yes.
Okay, that's built into contingency aspects of it?
So we really got a decent deal on this because it was the year end.
So let me make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure I understand the numbers correctly. So that's built into the 4.154508, not the 4.777684, which has the additional contingency of 623,170, correct?
Well, it's actually built into the 4.72. It really is built into Motorola's cost. Up above where it says "radio system" cost, it's built into that cost.
Okay, so that, the viability of receiving this 15% contingency is still there without having to consider the upgrades for the first five years?
Correct.
All right, that's good to know. Important information to know.
Okay.
Good things to know, yeah, that's an important aspect.
So it eliminates the, what I call the Romco Peel thought process, the set it and forget it. So you're constantly being updated. You have the latest and greatest revisions of the radio system as time moves on, not just leaving it there with no upgrades.
So on the pros and cons, you indicated a con. Put that back up if you wouldn't mind that portion of the presentation.
You got that, pros and cons?
I could find it, we'd be all set.
Went past it. There you are. Got it?
There we go. What's the question on this?
Just wanted to look at and review again.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I understand it again.
All right, I'm gonna ask the question because I come from a sales background. Is that their final quote? Can we sharpen the pencil for Motorola?
We got a quote of over $4 million from them. I got them to sharpen this because they want to take the credit for this year on their...
Are they asking for appropriation or an LOI, letter of intent?
Excuse me?
Are they asking for the appropriation for 2021 or looking for a letter of intent?
There's a, I heard, are we asking for the appropriation for 2021?
Right, or are they asking for a letter of intent?
We have to cut them a purchase order based on the state contract price, unless you're bulk discounted.
Okay, and the timing of that, Paul, is by year end?
By tomorrow. I mean, we've got a few days after that.
By tomorrow? And you're bringing this to us today?
That can probably slip to the end of the week without any problem with the beginning of next week.
Okay.
But this is, this number is based on the state contract price, which is already pre-negotiated, and then a discount on top of that. Any other questions?
Do you have something to add?
Excuse me, yeah, so my understanding is that the town, the previous town council approved the $5.5 million budget for the radio system. We got this information last minute from Motorola. As a matter of fact, I received an email from Anthony yesterday that vendors are telling their clients that, hey, get your orders in now, January 13th. There's a range between 8% and 15% on Motorola equip. So, you know, if you want to average that out, let's say 10% on equipment. I don't know, 3.9 times 10%, or 4.7 times...
$400,000.
Yep.
So, you know, this has been a project that's been in the works for the last two years. There was a real sense of urgency when I first got here to replace the radio system, to upgrade the radio system. This has been something that has been, we've had liaisons from the town council at the meetings. Deputy Mayor, Sam Panel, was at one of them. And I believe Walter Goad was at another one, I believe the same one. And unfortunately, there's new council members, and this is what happens every two years when things change over.
Okay, so yes, the council did approve 5.5, but I believe the big question, Anthony, is we didn't appropriate any money for this yet, correct? We didn't bond, we didn't...
We haven't bonded. And as Kevin mentioned, we're not really looking for money tonight. It's just more of the, it's more of a purchase order to get the Motorola.
So an LOI, letter of intent, because it's not necessarily, not cutting a check, like you said. It indicated cutting a check.
No, 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 the check, we don't pay Motorola until the job is complete.
No, there's milestone payments.
There's milestone payments, okay.
What kind of...
Yeah, so like, when would the first payment be due and for how much? Because if we haven't appropriated any money, where are we getting this from?
Well, don't forget, we still have to wait until the towers are built before we can even start putting equipment on the towers. So it's gonna be a while. Paul, maybe you could help me out with the timeframe on this with the towers and stuff, too?
We could have this done within calendar year '22. I usually say 18 months if we were building the sites. If these sites get built, I believe the Tilcon site is supposedly gonna be built by sometime during the spring of this year. And the site up in Northford is early fall. If they, if they're ready to go in July 1st or June 1st, we're ready to stop putting equipment on it right away. The subscriber units, we could install immediately if we wanted to and put them on the old system, put the information for the new system in it so that when we go to... system, put the information for the new system in it, so that when we go to test the new system, we have, we have vehicles on it to use, you know, to test with. Then it's just a flick of the switch, and all the users are on the new system. I have wording that, that I'd like to put on, well, has to be on the PO for legal reasons, referencing the state contract, but I would also want to put in that the town will not take delivery on equipment before beginning of second quarter next year for the subscriber equipment, and they are not to release the backbone equipment or the site equipment until such a time that both sites are ready to have the equipment put in it. I can't see having this stuff sit in the warehouse for six months.
So, do you have any type of, so, based on that information, do you have any schedule of like, what those payments would look like once equipment starts being released?
I have it in the state contract. I, I really can't dig it out right now, but I think it's 20% on order. They bill you after they receive the purchase order. It might even be only 10%, and then 15% or 20% when we do what we call a CDR, which is a customer design review. That's really what triggers the first major milestone payment. But I don't, I can, I can, is that agree that has me there?
You're looking at a million dollars roughly, 20% of five?
I can get you those percentages rather quickly, but I just don't have them in front of me right now.
Okay.
All right, well, yeah, I think that's important, because we need to talk to our finance director as to what our options are for financing this, because we have not allocated any money towards this project. And if you're talking second quarter, you're talking April, we're still in this fiscal year, and we have no money appropriated.
Well, you have money appropriated, it was in the 2021 CIP, the $5.5 million was appropriated in there. We haven't sold any notes or bonds to get the cash to pay for it yet, if that's what you're referring to. It was definitely in the 2021 CIP for the 5.5 million.
So, we haven't bonded?
We haven't bonded, right. We have the appropriations in place.
So, we have to go through the whole, we have to go through the whole bonding process.
You don't want to bond it till you, till you need it.
Right, right. August of '22 is our next adventure into the, into the capital market, so we can pick up money.
When is?
August of '22.
August '22?
Yeah, we did August of '21, first hit, and then we're going back a year from now, August of '22, to get the second bike at the school, police station, and then we'll pick up this as well.
So, if we owe money in the meantime, where do we get it from?
We could, we could front load it, we have, we have cash.
Anthony, do we have to wait that long to do that? Can't we, if we understand the landscape of, the environment that we're, we think rates are going to go up?
We could accelerate it. The notes, the notes we issued last year come due in August, so rather than, well, by the time you go into market, it's $50,000, $60,000, or, no, it's $450,000, wrong decimal place. Why would you go out twice? If you have a, a bond, a note's coming due in August of '22.
Sure.
We just hold, we have, we have cash to cover that $1 million from now until August of '22.
Okay, okay, answers that.
Paul, Walt Goad here. On the service contract, you've run it out five years, and you said that's included in all of this?
Not only is it included in that, but we get the bulk rate discount on that also.
Right. What does it look like after five years, from like, the five-year to like, the 10-year period? That when we're paying, what is that going to be like? I notice it does go up each year, is there no significant increase, or do you have any further?
They will not commit to anything over five years on an initial purchase.
So, we really don't know what those fees will be then?
Vin Marino, are you on? Are you available?
Vin, can you hear us? You're muted.
Vin hasn't moved very much, he's like my elf on the shelf. If you touch him, you have to do a dance.
Hey, Vin, are you there?
Yes, I'm trying, sorry. Everything froze up on me, but I'm here.
Okay, all right, Vin, are we, is it viable to go into executive session at this point in time to discuss amongst ourselves, along with the chief and our town manager?
At the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, yeah. Can you, Michael, can you share that with him?
Yeah.
Mike, can you restate the question?
Yeah, sure. The mayor is asking if, if the council can go into executive session on this matter.
It's the radio, the emergency radios.
Right.
Yeah, for security purposes.
Security, okay.
Because it relates to the upgrade of the emergency management system, radio system, which would be a security, PD, fire system. So, I would say, yes, as lo, as long as we're not going to get into negotiation issues with vendors, that would not be a security issue. We're talking about the general system.
Yes.
It's a color rule argument that you can go into executive session.
Yes, this would be about the general system. Okay, so.
Then I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Would it be appropriate to entertain the motion for executive session at the?
It'd be item 10A.
Item 10A?
Well, you just, I think you could just add to your agenda.
Yeah.
An executive session, and then label it for purposes of discussing security related to the radio project.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to add to the agenda for 10A, discussion on the security radios project.
So, move.
Second. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Downs.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right, Paul, any other things you want to share with us before we move on?
No, I think that's it. I think we got ourselves a decent project at a decent price here.
All right, Paul, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Okay, you want me to drop off?
No, no, you're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay.
We'll just go on mute, and then we'll, if we have any further questions, we'll, if you can stay, stay, if you like, it's up to you.
In the meantime, I'll, I'll look for those percentages in the state contract.
Please do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to, let's see, we went through here. Where were we at? Six citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. I'm going to take a moment, and I want to recognize I had the opportunity to visit our food pantry this past week, and I want to thank Fran and Rita and Christine and Ms. Williams and the other folks that are down there. My wife and I visited and did a little bit of, of work alongside them earlier this week, last week, I should say. What an outstanding operation that they've put together, and the pay's not great, I got to tell you. They're, they're working really hard, and it's all on, on their own sweat equity. It's a, it's a, something that we have here in town that I think we should be very proud of. I think a lot of people, a lot of folks here in North Branford don't realize that there are food insecure folks here, community members, neighbors, that utilize this resource, and it's a wonderful resource. So, take that into account during this holiday season, and again, in other portions of the year where, where we're maybe not thinking so much about charity, you know, the middle of summer, the, you know, the spring, fall, whatever it may be, but, and, and maybe take something down to the pantry, or, or cut a check, or do what you can, but it's, it's really appreciated, and I want to send a, a thank you to those folks for what they do, and outstanding work that they do. Okay, that said, citizen statements, petitions, correspondence, I'm going to ask, due to the length of tonight's meeting, and the complexity of our schedule, that the statements are somewhat brief, give about three minutes, and I'll ask those in the audience if they'd like to have the floor. For Mayor Bob Viglione, how are you, sir?
Hello, good, how are you?
Well, thank you, thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome. The first thing I want to say, I, I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How do you get everybody to wear suits? They didn't wear them when I was up there, Tommy never wore a suit.
You know, just seeing how handsome I am, and they just want to emulate that. I just lied on, on up here.
You look good, you guys look good.
Thank you.
I, I just want to, I missed, I missed the last meeting that I was supposed to be at, when I was still up there, and I just wanted to say a thank you to a few people. Mike, Mike Paulus, Gina, Gina Cox, guys who were a great help to me while I was sitting up there. Maybe I better put my glasses on, so I can see what I'm saying here. I wrote just like, 1 o'clock in the morning, so.
Sounds good so far?
I hope you guys understand it. Okay, all the town hall employees, I worked with them the two years I was here, they were a great help. You did a great job with them, you guys are good people. Fran, who's not here, naturally, and his public works, works employees, they, they do a great job. I mean, you guys heard this a million times before, but this is what I, what I dealt with when I was sitting in your spot. Library staff, Parks and Rec, great with the senior citizens, I've seen them, I've been there for meals, and they do a great job taking them wherever they have to go, whatever has to be done, the shots that we got, it's fantastic, you know, for the virus. Library staff, I'm up, I'm at water all the time, I love it there, it's quiet, it's peaceful. I get a chance to relax. Fire department, police department, you guys, great job. Fire department, fantastic. I used them over the years, the last 50 years I've been here, I've used them a bunch of times for my family, my mother-in-law has passed away now, and always a great service. I can't say enough about them, fire and police. Matter of fact, I saw John Florio do, this is years ago, I saw John Florio do a class for kids in this town, at, at Company One, at the firehouse, and I couldn't believe the great job that he did. I never saw anybody teach kids about fire trucks, it's a hard thing to do, kids don't understand, and he did a fantastic job. I mean, I was on the paid department for 31 years and handed, and this, this guy blew everybody away. John Florio did a real nice job. And, and Kenny Ash at my house one night with a paramedic, and we had a little problem with my great-grandson, I think he was like, a month or two old, and because of what these guys did, we were able to keep, keep him safe over the last year, year and a half, he's like, he's like 19 months old now, and everything is going good with that, and I really, really appreciate it. He might have been in harm's way, so that was taken care of, and that was, that was the fire department. You know, the cops that have been there for me, and I needed them, have done a great job. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, and I still don't understand the suit thing, but I have to talk to you about it after. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody, and I think you guys got a great council.
Thank you.
I think everybody in town is, is in real good shape, and, and I guess that's about it, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas. Well, that was a, a nice statement from former Mayor Bob Viglione. We appreciate your, your service here for the town, and we look forward to, to working with you ongoing as a citizen, and always excited to have you here. So, Merry Christmas to you and your family, and Happy Healthy New Year.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else from the crowd that'd like to take the floor? Okay, I see Mr. Potter back there, I want to thank Mr. Potter for all the work you put together, helping out with the tree lighting, and the hayrides. I know personally, my daughter and my wife and I had a wonderful time, it was a, it was a heck of an event. It's, it's so nice to see when this town gets together and, and has a good time, and forgets about all the crazy parts of life, and just really gets to enjoy what small-town, you know, suburban environment is like, and that's something that we probably don't think about too often, but we need to think about more often. So, thank you very much for.
I'm welcome, I'm about to say, I have great help. I have nothing to offer except coordination, semi-coordination skills, but my group did supplies, tractors, the hay, we make it all happen, and we enjoy it more than you do.
Thank you, we thank you very much for that. I speak on behalf of the town, thank you very much. Okay, seeing there's no other folks that want to join for citizen statements, we're going to move on to resignations and appointments. Item A, resignation of Zach Canada from the Ethics Commission. I don't believe we have, we need a motion, we just accept the resignation, as he has moved on to the Board of Education, we appreciate him taking on these new tasks. We are, however, adding Mr. Zach Canada to the Board of Ed, they're appointing him to the Permanent Projects Building Committee. I do believe we need to have a vote on that, so I'll ask.
So, move.
Second. Okay, so, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Plitchev? Have a vote?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And that passes, thank you. All right, on to item eight, unfinished business discussions and actions. A, award of RFQ slash P, number four, 2020 slash 2021, clerk of the works, the new North Branford Police Department for Permanent Projects Building Committee?
Not ready.
Okay, not ready, so we will move on from there. All right, and item B, review of the proposed amendment for inter-municipal animal control agreement. Are we, any players new on that?
No.
Okay, so it's still.
Where are we on that?
Yeah.
Nowhere.
Okay.
Still talking. All right, so, how do we get somewhere with that?
Don't agree to it, we don't pay for? Is that what?
That sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I think at the, after we get through the holidays, we're, we're going to have to, Anthony and I are going to have to arrange another sit-down with Branford.
I'd like to see the screenshot.
Okay, well, let's hopefully that will become finished business at some point in the near future. All right, so, seeing we're moving on from there, we're going to go to item nine, new business discussions and actions, all right. Subset A, review and approval of the United Illuminating Wire Line Agreement.
Yeah, Victor's here, I can walk you through that, and as well as Attorney Marino has worked on this.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, good evening, Victor Benham, the town engineer. When I started a few months ago, this was one of the items on the plate for me, as far as getting the agreement that was put together by the United Illuminating Company with the town of North Branford. This agreement is in your, should be in your packet for your review. It's, it is in support of an already existing Connecticut general statute that encourages the shared use of existing facilities throughout town. The agreement provides terms and conditions to which the UI agrees to allow the town to attach certain facilities to UI utility poles, and this is commonly referred to as a municipal gain, and it provides the town an opportunity to develop its infrastructure as far as communication systems, and the ability to, to develop, construct, and maintain those systems. So, I could kick it to the town attorney who has reviewed this agreement, I reviewed the agreement, and I would honestly tell you that it's a, you know, if you took a look at it, it's a lot, a lot of legal ease if you have any questions about any of that. But ultimately, you know, what we're hoping to do is, again, maintain our right by Connecticut general statute to put a, you know, municipal facility on any of these utility poles throughout town, and this could help support, you know, developing a fiber optic system. I'm interested in it, because we have sanitary sewer communication systems that we need to mount to certain poles throughout town, not a lot of them, but there are some cases where we need to do that, and we're currently looking to update the communication system for DeForest Drive flow meter system. So, that, that's something that I kind of have pending, waiting on this agreement to go through. If there are any questions from the, the council, be happy to work with it, hopefully work with Attorney Marino to answer them.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Councilor Downs.
Mike?
If you have a, say, a damaged pole.
If, if I may, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just for the council, what's before you is a standard, functionally a standard form agreement that was created by UI, CLMP, SNET, and Frontier. All the companies are using them to create a process when a municipality wants to exercise their municipal gain. This contract sets the process of what the municipality would have to do, but the contract functionally is a form contract that has already been adopted by, I believe, 69 communities.
Okay, I think we got a.
So, it has definitely gone through the legal review.
Okay, I think we have a question from Councilor Downs.
Yeah, I was just wondering, if we have a pole that's a UI pole, and it's damaged, and there's, say, three or four different things attached to it, and we set up a pole next to it, now how long? different things attached to it, and we set up a pole next to it, now how long do we have to wait with that damaged pole for all of these folks to move their equipment off that pole?
So, that is actually one of the, one of the things that this agreement would help to streamline, this also comes with an online system that each entity that puts something on the pole would have to register with that online system, which is coordinated through UI, so then UI would know what's on each pole, who they need to work with to get those items off the poles, and move to the sister pole, I guess is what we'd call it, and I do remember seeing that in one of our emails leading up to this, and I don't know if Attorney Moreno has anything to add to it?
I do not.
Okay. It would hopefully help to streamline that process a little bit more, I know it's typically one that seems to take a while.
Yeah, that would be great, because that could really hang, a dead pole can be there for a year sometimes because you have to wait for one carrier, and then after that one carrier, then the next one has a period of time that they can get, and it's kind of...
Perpetuates.
Right, it just, it steamrolls, so that would be good. Thank you.
Okay.
I think, yeah, it's just, you'll need a simple motion to approve the agreement as presented.
All right, we'll accept the motion to approve the agreement as presented.
So moved.
Motion...
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zeppon.
Yeah, I have a question. On exhibitors, places for figures and dollars amounts, are we going to be informed what these are? I know we're approving the agreement, but does that include whatever, whatever monies we're going to spend that are not listed here?
So, the question regarding the, one of the exhibits that shows the pricing...
Exhibit A is the page that lists the cost, the application fee, the unit per pole, the number of poles, and the total fixed charges, but there's no numbers there, so...
Right, so this, again, is kind of a boilerplate agreement, and it would depend on, each project would depend on what the cost for the project would be, depending on what you're actually putting on the pole, how many poles you might be using, and weight of wires between the poles, there may be situations where poles need to be upgraded, or guy wires attached to the poles to support any of that equipment, that may come through.
All right, so, I mean, how many poles are we signing for? Is it going to be all in North Branford, North Branford and Norfolk?
Right.
I don't know whether, like, in Norfolk, we have Wallingford Electric, we don't have UI, so are the poles in Norfolk UI poles, or are they Wallingford poles?
Right, so this would cover all the UI poles throughout town, I'm not sure that there's many on the, obviously, if it's Wallingford Electric, we wouldn't be expecting to have UI poles there, but this covers all the poles within the town's right-of-way area, it doesn't cover existing poles in any private easements or rights, right-of-way, so those would have to be separate agreements with anybody that has poles on those properties. So, it basically, I can't tell you how many utility poles UI has throughout town in the right-of-ways.
Well, how urgent is disagreement?
Victor, just as, it's not urgent that we have to sign this yesterday, because we've been holding it probably for the better part of the last eight months, because we've been trying to understand what the purpose of this agreement is, because it's entering into an agreement for something that today you don't necessarily need, but what it does is, it provides a, as it was explained to me, because I had about an hour-long meeting with the people from UI, because I represent eight of the communities within the geographic area that are being asked to sign these contracts, and I'm, since I think May, I've said no. Why would my client sign a document binding them to something that they don't need today? You know, how do I know, how do I know that this contract's going to satisfy their needs in the future? So, what was explained to me is that all this is doing is setting up a process for when you exercise your municipal gain. So, it's not committing you to any financial obligations today, it's just signing you up for that process so you know what needs to be done, or engineering knows needs to, engineering knows what needs to be done when you want to exercise municipal gain, and you may never exercise municipal gain.
Well, I understand your explanation, but what they told you and what's not in print are two different things, and...
I think part of the, what we're looking at in this next wave of infrastructure money that just got signed, maybe running our own fiber from NBIS to Norfolk, to Stanley T. or Smith Library, so we would have to count how many UI poles, that's why there's no, there's no numbers there. How many UI poles are we talking that we're going to hit, times the $87, go to Wallingford Electric or Frontier, whoever runs those poles, pay them, there's an upfront analysis cost they have to do to make sure that the pole is structurally sound, whatever, so as Bennie mentioned, we don't need it today, but as we're looking at this infrastructure money coming down the road, we are looking between the town and Board of Ed of, the Board of Ed leases fiber now, between NBIS and the schools in Norfolk, so if we could put our own fiber in, eliminate that cost, and get it paid for with this ARPA times two money, whatever we're going to call this infrastructure money, so this, we're contemplating, putting something together for the next year's budget, this analysis phase, because it's going to take a while to get that infrastructure money in place, so the first step is the analysis on the poles, how many UI poles, how many Wallingford, how many Frontier, and so on, factor that into a budget number, and then use that, again, using that second infrastructure pot of money to accomplish this, that's what the, one of our thoughts is. So, it's blank, because if, look on page 70 of the scan, it has the cost per pole, Exhibit E, so you won't know how many poles you're going to hit until you map out your path of your fiber. So, there's, I think it's $87 per pole, or, you know, there's all different kinds of costs in there.
Application fee, additional fee per pole.
Right. So, once you map out where you want your municipal gain, that Bennie's talking about, that every town has the right to use the poles, there's an upfront cost for them to go through and analyze it and do some quick analysis. That's what you're paying for here, but we don't know the cost, we don't know what poles we're hitting yet. I mean, how many poles between NBIS and Stanley T. or Smith Library, I don't have an answer for you yet, but that's part of our work, we're making for next year's budget, is to put the numbers together to say, okay, it's going to touch 37 UI poles, 12 Wallingford poles, two Frontier poles, whatever it is, times the appropriate fees, and then we'll come back with a budget number and say, okay, step one of this process of running our own fiber is going to cost us $10,000, I don't know, pick a number, but broken down by these various factors. So, the reason why there's no cost, and the other thing, is we don't know how many poles we're touching yet. Maybe we may touch no poles, as Bennie mentioned, we may not even do the project at all, but in order to do an analysis, is it a viable project, you have to know how many poles you're going to touch, and then that triggers this fee per pole, kind of fee that UI is going to charge you. So, that's why, that's why that other page is blank, because you don't know, A, if you're going to do it at all, or what path your fiber's going to take, and then once you know the path your fiber's going to take, you will count how many poles you're going to affect, and then you'd have to pay that fee to UI.
Why is there not, why is there not an agreement for Eversource or Wallingford Power, and we're only talking UI here? I'm confused.
I don't have the answer to that question, but...
So, this document, it kind of sets us up for that, to start that process for each individual project, what we'd have to do with those other companies, Wallingford Electric, Frontier, is go through this process to even get permission to work on their poles, then they would jump us into the next phase to do kind of a project analysis of what we're actually proposing. This is kind of like just getting us through Phase A, or, you know, Step A, for each of those individual projects that we might take on.
How often do we work on the poles?
This is Victor?
Yep.
For the council, the genesis of this really is, there was a, I believe it was a 2008 regulatory proceeding before the Siding Council, I say Siding Council, I might be pure, same body, but this is a result of that regulatory process, that the state regulatory agency wanted to see a system put in place because they felt the municipalities were not getting what they were entitled to through the municipal gates. So, this was really, this is being done by UI to kind of satisfy its obligation to the regulatory authority in that proceeding. That's kind of how this whole thing started, so, and, you know, and that's where we are with this, that's why it's UI at this moment in time.
All right, so this seems like it's a little half-baked right now, there's, I don't like unfinished documents, so approve them.
I make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion tabled, to table by Deputy Mayor, and seconded by Mr. Counselor Mace.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
All right, item B, set public hearing on ATV ordinance.
Yes, we discussed at the last meeting, so I just have a brief cover memo to move this item, if you so desire, to the meeting on January 18th, to get enough time for publication, and we typically set it for 7:30 during our regular, regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council set a public hearing date for January 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM on the proposed ordinance 2022-1, regulating pocket bikes, minibikes, dirt bikes, all-terrain vehicles, and the like. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
That passes. Okay. Okay, item C, NBIS Masonry Roof Structural Engineering Consultant, proposed by QA&amp;M.
Right, so Rusty is available, and this was one of the, I think we discussed him, he's back with his proposal, and I'll let him explain the steps in the process, so Rusty, you're on if you can hear us, go ahead.
Sure. Good evening. So, a few, quite a few months back, the council approved the roof replacement and masonry project, at which point, as we were doing a study and evaluation of the existing roof, one of the images that we presented was gable roof, similar to the auditorium, and what we're having, we're designing, has been designed at the high school. The council then decided to go in that direction to do what we would refer to as a partial roof, so as you look at, from the quad, the main entrance, in which, where you see both the, all three of the buildings, the auditorium, the high school, and the intermediate school, all those roof structures will be a gable roof structure with a metal roof, and, you know, hopefully, as in the case of the auditorium, it's a patina green color, and it's also the same that's been selected by the building committee on the high school. This roof is not going to be over the entire intermediate school, it's going to be in certain locations where we can, it makes sense and we can do it, the rest of, the entire roof will be replaced, but in this case, what we will be doing is screening a lot of the equipment that's up there, but also creating a roof structure that'll shed the water, and also work with the design of the masonry so that the moisture doesn't get into the masonry as one of the, it's one of the major problems right now with the existing structure. You had approved a proposal earlier, that was for a flat roof design, in order to do the gable roof structure, we have to get an engineer involved, our structural engineer, to really design roof structure to support the gable roof, and that's what this proposal is all about, from an architectural design, there's a little bit of time, but we felt that it really didn't make that much of a difference to our process, but from a structural point of view, they've got to come back, look at all the existing structure, come up with new structure to support the gable roof, and at the locations where we are introducing it at the intermediate school. So, that's what this proposal, it's really an addendum or amendment to the earlier proposal to now put on a sloping or gable metal roof at the intermediate school.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to add a fee of 30, an additional fee of $38,500 for the NBIS Intermediate School Contract Amendment with QA&amp;M for engineering, for engineering services. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond, any discussion? Seeing none? Clear?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
And that passes. Okay. All right, we've already discussed item D, we're going to skip now to item E, CIP for adding additional projects, 8-24, referral to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening. The 21-22 page in your packet for tonight is the identical page that was adopted when the 21-22 operating budget was adopted. The thought, after talking last week, was the timing of the two big projects, and those are going to spill into 22-23, as you see on that page in here, the 2.1 million, which is going to get revised down to the 1.6 of the grant for the STW roof. The one I want to point your attention to is the high school project. I was on a call last week after the agenda went out with Rusty, Marnie, and folks up the state, and you recall that the high school project was originally a 66-odd million-dollar project, and the state of Connecticut now has been advised that it's going to be roughly a 70-million-odd-dollar project. In the eyes of the state, that constitutes a reauthorization for the additional amount. They won't pay us back one dime today, until the process is, by June 30th, we have to request a reauthorization to get back onto this list that gets finalized every December 15th, that gets presented to the legislature in their session that starts in February, and passed in May. So, timing-wise, we obviously missed this year, so we have till June 30 of '22 to submit a letter for the increased cost, get before, get on the list hopefully for December 15th of '22, which will then get acted in the legislative session of '23. So, we won't be able to file reimbursement requests for the high school until May, June of '23.
Any request?
Any request. They will not pay a dime because...
But if we don't file for over 66, we could file for...
If you kept it at the 66, 240, you could file tomorrow, but because we increased it by that plus or minus 4 million, in their eyes, it has to go back through this whole process. It used to be an EDIL 49, it was filed years ago, that was the format, it was a lot easier, a lot simpler. Under this new format, it's considered a reauthorization, so, again, that list is, June 30 is the deadline to submit to get on that list, it gets finalized in December and acted on in the subsequent legislative session.
So, we really had no opportunity?
No, because we just made the vote last month, so we missed the window.
Yeah.
So, the reason I bring that up is, in '22-23, I had the $4 million of additional money, that's going to have to be put back into 21-22, so by June 30th, we have to have all our ducks in a row, and part of our ducks in a row means that we have the money behind it. So, I had originally thought about putting that into '22-23, we really need to add that to 21-22 CIP, we'll bond it again as the progression of the bonding and... We'll bond it again as progression of the bonding and notes go out through the process. But because we have to have everything in place by June 30 of '22, that $4 million, the additional amount, and again, I'll get to fine-tune the amount, talk to Marnie. I think it was 4,039, 29, it's going to be the exact number, 4,029. We can amend that number in here.
Anthony, is this typical?
It's new. Like I said, the old way we did it on NBIS and everything else was, you filed what's called an EDO 49, which changes the budget. State has to approve it still, but it was, as you submitted those forms, the project scope got changed, whether they thought it was eligible, ineligible. That was, that was a process that was done previously.
So we were, we were approved underneath that old...
We were, well...
Old understanding, correct?
Well, yeah, because this just changed, and they call it Oscar now. I forget what it stands for.
Do we have any type of grandfathering?
Negative.
No, that's nice.
Because this woman who, at the state, is running this present, presently, is very prudent.
Prudent's a good word, yeah.
I'm trying to think. She takes her job very seriously as a steward of the state taxpayers' money, and because now it constitutes this reauthorization, this is the process that you have to follow.
Will they take into account the growing interest?
Negative. They don't care.
They don't care about that.
They don't care. Because in her eyes, again, she knows it's now a $70 million project. She cannot act and reimburse us on the $66 million project because she knows it's a $70 million project. But that project, the delta, hasn't been blessed by the legislature. So the whole thing is on hold for reimbursement purposes until we get that letter by June 30, the finalized list by December of '22, legislative session of '23, which ends typically in May. Once they do it, the governor signs it into law, and then we can start looking for money.
You can't file for any expediency?
Negative.
Anthony, I have a question.
Yes.
By June of next year, we're only halfway through the project.
That was my exact question, because you get one bite at the apple.
Right, and what happens if we're up over 70 after that?
That, well...
It seems like a flawed process.
Well, and that, in talking with, I don't know if Rusty's still on, okay. The thought is that all these major things, the bids will be out, we should have things relatively locked up, but that was exactly my question. If you have one bite at the apple, is it worth waiting until June of '23? That just pushes the money back till '24 at that point, you know?
Because there's a good, there's a, I mean, that's only $3 million, and I've heard numbers as high as six or seven million over.
Oh, yeah.
Thrown around.
That was, that was exactly the comment.
We're already at 7 million in contingency.
Yeah, but we just approved 4.1 million.
And we had 2.9 to begin, so we're at 7 million in contingency.
Right.
Already, so...
Well, I'm waiting for Martin to give me the exact budget, but the only comment, the caveat that she made was, if something catastrophic were to happen, the state would be there for us. That was exactly the term she used. But she said that you get one bite at these reauthorizations, and I said to her, you know, is it worth waiting another year to have some more concrete numbers? We're still early in the process by June of '22.
I don't think it's worth waiting. It's imperative to wait.
Till June of '23?
Yeah, I mean, being a former member of the permanent project billing committee, this is going to, there's going to be other iterations going to change that number. If we're at this point now, and I'll take from the peanut color here, Victor, if you want to take and say something?
Rather safe than sorry, I think.
Yeah. Victor, by all means, if you want to stand and say?
That, we just found out just now, and we're working on a game plan, I'd like to do the numbers of it. That is catastrophic. How are we paying, how are we paying for everything? We have 2.5 million already of money that's out there that Marnie's been working on to get back.
Are you, you're stipulating it's already catastrophic?
Well, here, well, look at, we got, you got a $66 million budget. How will we pay $66 million by the time '23 hits? Say if they approved the 70 million and they give it to us, how do we withstand that financially, that whole time to pay it on ourselves? See, what we were doing is progress payments, am I wrong in that?
You're correct.
To get money, there's no way this town can afford a $66 million.
Well, the net will still be the net, so let's say it's 70, say it's 50 net, whatever it is. At the end of the day, we're going to bond just our net cost.
Of course.
So we're going to incur more short-term interest costs by having to sell more bands, one-year bands, to cover the cash flow needs for this project. That's where it's going to come back and hurt us.
It's not that we're not paying them along the way.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
Yeah.
We're going to borrow more short-term money to keep cash in our pocket to pay the contractors as they go along.
So if we waited to 2023, in your opinion, what, what's kind of the pluses and minuses?
I think it's more of a peace of mind thing. If you get, if this woman was very adamant, you get one bite at the apple and that's it.
Is there any way to increase that number? So let's say we have an idea that it's going to come in at 74.
Well, by June, you have till June, so we have another six months.
But we have to, we have to prove the appropriation, meaning we can't reject X amount more, 5% more.
Right.
With understanding the market or getting, you know, a good estimation.
Right, right, right.
By that time, you'd be locked down pretty good.
By June?
Yeah, but I said, by June, you should have a better, a better handle than you are in December. And will there be some unforeseen things still? Potentially. I mean, if you had a crystal ball, you'd be, you know...
The next four months are all MEPs, which me, Lou, and Tom are working on, and we'll have a better handle by the end of April, come May.
So I was going to say, why don't we put this on the first, the agenda for the first meeting of May?
Okay.
To re-gauge and look at, and then we can make a more educated decision as to, do we look towards this June?
Right.
Or do we look to push ahead yet another year and then incur those soft dollar costs, the soft, you know, the soft dollar interest costs?
Does that give you guys enough time to do what you need to do? If we do it the first meeting of May, will you have enough time to get your paperwork together and...
By the June 30 date to the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we still need to get the $4 million in the 2122 plan.
I agree.
I could change it to 4,030, whatever that number, 429.
Yeah, if we know that now.
489, whatever the number that we talked last meeting. But that needs to be added, so it's in place, so in case, in case we have the firm numbers by June 30 of '22. We go to the state, that's our one additional bite at the apple. We have pretty much concrete numbers, hopefully nothing unforeseen happens, and then we go from there.
I think we should, I think if we do go that route, we should have some sort of contingency plan...
What if?
In our back pocket, just in case that happens, so that we're not caught off guard. We should have some sort of plan for that, what that is, I have no idea at this point.
You'll definitely have numbers, and we will have it.
Yeah, can we increase our contingency and then raise the cost of the total project?
Then you run into the issue that...
Well, you're over 5%.
You're over 5%. Right, so you're not going to...
Well, we're not over 5% if we've increased the cost of the overall project to 70 versus 66. So you have another...
Yes, we are. We were on, we were when we did the vote.
We did, it's for the 5%.
Yeah, we were over, we were over the 5% when we made the vote.
No, what he's saying is if we spent, say, hopefully it never happens, but say by May, in the May, if we spent another 2 million out of the 4 million that you gave us, increase it back to 5% and then go to the state.
Correct.
And have that buffer.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that 2 million has to get reclassified into the project, like the first 2.9 did.
Which Rusty will have to do, but you can extend it again to the 5%.
Yeah, we're going to have to explore that and examine that come closer to that time period.
Right.
So figure first or second meeting in May.
Right.
To, to fine-tune these numbers to see where you are.
Right.
And see if we can get closer, because if it's truly one bite at the apple, we don't want to leave meat on the bone. We also don't want to get caught without getting, you know, these reimbursements, you know, the times that we want.
Oh, yeah, it's huge. It's huge, no.
It is a big deal.
Does the Board of Ed have to do anything first, like take a vote prior to us taking a vote? Like they had to approve the project initially and make their recommendation to the council? So do they have to do anything?
I, I will find out. I don't have an answer to that question. She only said that they have to be notified by June 30.
Right, but we have to make sure we have all the ducks in a row there.
Now, would that mean Board of Ed notified?
Because we don't want to lose out.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm with you. I'm with you.
So this is very important to make sure that we have on the agenda. Let's put it on the agenda for the first week, first meeting in May. At least we, we can always push it to the second, but at least it's there for the first, we don't forget.
Can we keep it on unfinished business, just so we don't...
Yeah, we keep it unfinished business for now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather have it there and pass it.
Yeah.
Or have an update quickly. If we have an update here and there, it's not a bad idea. Is that okay with you to come up and give us a quick update on that?
Yeah, I can give you updated, you know, where we are cost-wise, everything else as well.
I think that's a prudent decision. I think that's the...
It's a large project.
Yeah, it's a large project. This is the largest undertaking we've ever had in this town, so...
So this was definitely a monkey wrench that, that I didn't, no one knew about until I had this conversation with the woman at the state.
And that could change you, because I got, if we're going to have a problem with this, my guess, other municipalities are also going to have a problem with this. It seems a little rigid.
That's a good word.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good word.
I agree with Jim that it should have been grandfathered in, you're saying it isn't. But would it be prudent to have our state senator and our state representative look into it for us?
I would think that would be a good line of thought.
Maybe from your office or from Anthony, writing both the letters saying, hey, all of a sudden, we applied for this year by June 30 of this year. We should have been grandfathered in, and if they changed the parameters after that, then we shouldn't have to wait until June 30 of next year, then go into 2024 or 2023.
I think it's something to explore as, as, if any goes into legislative session. I don't know if we, as one municipality, have the ability to change that. I'm sure we're not the only one that's, I know there's several municipalities that are also building schools right now.
Right.
Maybe we look to see who other, what other, other towns and cities are in the same quagmire and look to join arms with them and have a group letter, you know, a group opinion sent out. So that's something I'd like to have explored, to see if there's other municipalities in the same type of, you know, environment.
Or other legislatures going to back for their decisions.
Correct, and I'm sure, I'm sure Rep. Kencolor can help us with that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only other point I want to point out to, going back to the current year, 2122, in that municipal project grant column, the town receives $301,000 annually. That historically, the way the state intended that money was additional town aid road money, unless you asked for a waiver for a specific purpose that they allowed. And historically, over the years, when Ben Barnes was at OPM, basically it was a rubber stamp. Whatever you asked for a waiver for, you got without any, any kind of hassle.
Okay.
I shouldn't say hassle. Question. There's a new sheriff on that arena, and he has taken a very conservative approach to what he will allow under the municipal project grant. Bottom line, though, is we do have $300,000 we get annually. We've allocated on this document, 233, which is going to change because historically, we've always covered the police vehicles through that grant. The new philosophy from this new gentleman is, he will cover the cost of the vehicle, but not the outfitting of it. So in the past, we've got the whole package covered by these grants. Now we have to figure another way. So that 180 you see in there is going to be reduced. He'll cover the vehicles, but not the...
So he'll just, just literally a plain-jane vehicle without it being outfitted for a police horse?
Well, when we buy the police vehicles, we buy the police vehicles, it's like $35,000 for the car, he'll cover that.
Yeah.
But the outfitting cost, the lights, the sire, and the, everything else, he doesn't want to cover.
Has been around 15,000.
That's nice.
Right. So, that's being the case, we're going to have to back out of the 108 that we have there currently, about $30,000. And there's no, obviously, the budget fund column is already locked in place. The fund balance column is locked in place. We may have to just run that account, that line item in the negative and just cover it in a subsequent year's budget. Or maybe, maybe Kevin and Jim will find 30,000 in their operating budget that we can...
They'll have lots of overtime.
Yeah, sure.
Cover. So...
Maybe intention, who knows?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
What he's saying is we're only going to get what we, we're not getting the 300,000.
Nope. So what I'm saying is that if, anything that you don't ask for the waiver for falls back to Mr. Victor here to use as town aid road, which is, which is good, because he has a lot of roads to do, we can, we always can catch up. But we like to use that for, again, we always bought police vehicles through that. I mean, this year, we have, we have earmarked for 2122.
We might have to go back to horses.
Roof over the, the tanks at Public Works, we had 75,000 for playground equipment in North Farms. Those are kind of things that, that he likes to cover. So my point is, there's $106,000 on the table if you folks want to put some projects towards that grant. So if you look at, on, on the sheet that's marked, page 148 in your, in your book, you'll find some things that maybe were not funded by the manager or by the council previously. You know, what comes to mind? You got 106,000, we could put some towards oil burners, TVES.
They already bought them.
They already bought them. Unit ventilators, TVES.
They already bought them.
They already bought them.
Basically, we have to come up with $106,000.
Or let it go to Victor to use for roads. So we're getting the 301 regardless of this. We can hear our...
How we appropriate it is from there. Should we do a creative accounting and we essentially figure out if we're going to create something from this end?
Right.
Appropriate from another end.
Right, right, right.
All right, fair enough.
All right, so the only change that I want to make then is the $4 million I'm going to add to 2122, so that if by chance we're doing a June 30, '22, second bite at the apple, everything will be in place.
Okay.
All right? So aside from that, is any other change in this once? Again, and only this year, this first year is the real, real year, the rest of it are just, you know, projection years, planning tools. So there's a motion on there to, to send, if you want to make, to send the revised capital improvement plan, and the revision will be to move that 4 million change from '22, '23 back to '21, '22, so that if we are going to do the second bite by June 30 of '22, we'll have everything in place. I'm not sure what page it's in on, on your, on your tablet, but...
Okay, so, so the motion, we have to amend this motion in here to move the $4 million on the high school project from '22, '23 back to '21, '22.
Excellent.
Okay. So I'll make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council instructs the Treasurer-Finance Director to forward the capital improvement plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 824, and bring it back to this body upon receipt of their action, with the amendment of moving $4 million for the North Branford High School project from year '22, '23 to the 21, '22 CIP.
All right. Motion by Councilor Rose, seconded by Deputy Mayor, my phone. Excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion? Clerk, please.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Okay. All right. Anthony, thank you.
You're welcome. And Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just to clarify, I think you had mentioned keeping this item on the agenda. It is referenced now as CIP, so I think I have to bring it back under new business next meeting as, if, if you all agree, state reimbursement for NBH, a high school project.
Yeah, I agree.
And then we'll continue to carry it under unfinished business after that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. On to item F, review and approval of the bid specifications on bid number two, 2021-2022 of the Atwater Memorial Library Interior Painting.
Just a quick note, the Lauren Davis, library director, good evening. The bid specifications in your packet essentially mirror the specifications from the recently Edward Smith Interior Library Paint Project, which wrapped up in early November. We're now hoping to do the Atwater Library. There's just a few, a few exceptions to this bid that we realized needed to be tweaked from the first go-around. Essentially, the work schedule, we increased the number of hours and the number of days to seven days a week, 12 hours. We thought if the contractor had more time, it allowed them to do a little bit more thorough job. The completion date, we also originally had put 14 consecutive days. We updated it to 21 consecutive days with the same understanding, would allow them more time to do a better thorough job. And then just the paint specifications were also updated to match the current wall color with the same understanding would allow them more time to do a better thorough job. And then just the paint specifications were also updated to match the current wall color at Atwater. So it's essentially the same as the Smith one, but just with a few tweaks.
I heard they did a great job in the Smith one as well.
They did a fantastic job. We were very happy.
Looking forward to seeing that in person and of course, seeing how that would...
Very happy.
Okay. Or motion, pardon?
Yeah, just a simple motion to approve the spec as submitted.
I'll accept a motion to approve the spec.
I'll make a motion to accept the submit.
Motion by Councilor Diamond. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Angeloni. Any discussion?
Yeah, we're approving this.
I can't see if...
Oh, it's the bid number two, 2021-2022.
That's the one.
Yeah. Mine doesn't have any dates in it. Are we supposed to have dates in there?
No, because they'll fill that in.
Yeah, the contract will come back with those dates.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear.
Ms. Davis, do you know about when?
Uh, no, I think it depends on how long it has to go out to the public, which is what, usually two weeks? So once...
So we're looking at mid-Jen?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, so that purchasing, Michelle Knackwood will fill that in when they're ready to submit this, to put it out to bid. Those dates will get filled in at that point then.
Okay. I just thought maybe everybody had a date and I didn't. That's...
No, no.
All right. We have a motion on the table and seconded. No discussion? Further discussion? Okay. Clerk, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. It passes. Thank you. All right. Item G, review of the 2022 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG.
Well, I would, I've been working hard with the mayor on this one. The server for the Dispatch Center for the Police Department is slowly fading into oblivion. I need a new server. I don't know if the chief wants to talk about it.
Chief Halloran, would you like to take the microphone and discuss a little?
So, so the current server that we have is about seven years old. It was recommended by NextGen to replace last year. We decided not to replace it based on the fact that we were moving into a new PD. They extended the warranty another year. The problem is, is getting parts for the servers. They're not supported anymore by Microsoft or Dell. So we need to replace that server. Fortunately, we just had this opportunity with the JAG grant. It's a $20,000 grant. I don't have the difference, Marie. Did I second you?
The difference is about $33,000.
Yeah, the all-in is $53,000?
Yeah, it's about $53,000.
$20,200 was the grant? For somebody that I thought was $20,200.
Twenty thousand even, I think.
Oh, $20,000?
It's $52.60.
Okay.
So we're applying for the grant now. The state allocated certain funds to certain municipalities. Our allocation, again, is $20,000. So the quote that we received might change a little bit, the way that things are going today and a month from now, if, or two months from now.
Plus or minus under $1,000?
I'm sorry?
Plus or minus under $1,000?
I thought you said $100,000.
No, under $1,000. Oh, gosh, no.
You made me nervous.
No, no, no.
It's, I think it's pretty accurate. You know, there might not be certain parts available when we go to order, because we can't order until we get, you know, approve the funds, so...
So two points of clarification. I want to make sure they're on record. One, this quote includes installation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is a finalized quote, other than maybe a couple...
Yeah, that's part of our, our contract, maintenance contract with NextGen.
Okay. And then the second is, this can, this server, as we know, we are finally embarking on building your new, your new station for your folks and getting that up and running. This was part of that project. This server can be utilized in that new station, correct? It's something that's movable. It's not going to have to be reinvented when we put that new station together, correct?
I was going to give you a hard time, but yes.
I thought you might. I thought you might.
I saw Tommy grinning over there.
Yeah, you do.
But yes, yes, it can be moved into the new station.
I only asked Councilor Diamond about six times about that.
He still doesn't believe it.
No, I'm just checking. I'm checking.
You know, the thought process originally was to make it a seamless move into a new station and have the technology there waiting for us. So it's, it's going to create a little bit of issues. We will, our backup server is now four years old, and it's coming to the end of life in the next year or two. So it'll all work out, you know, so that we could, we can make the move, you know.
Okay. So this is going to be appropriated. So we'll look to possibly create a motion where we are not utilizing... Well, we want to utilize not a general contingency account, but the building account, correct, for the Police Department.
Yeah, that it comes out of the...
The appropriation. Okay, good. All right. Then I'll accept a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Chief?
Could I ask a question? And maybe Attorney Marino might be able to answer that. Are we getting ourselves into a supplanting position on that?
On a what? Of what?
Supplanting? In other words, you can't use funds that are allocated for a grant.
Meaning, we're going to get...
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we're not supplanting. Would that be supplanting, Vin? I see you up on the screen.
Do you hear that, Vin? We're discussing the JAG grant for the NextGen, and the chief is asking about whether or not this would be supplanting funds.
You have to unmute.
You have to unmute.
Unmute. Can anyone read lips?
He's on another phone call.
I think he's on another call.
He's got to get off his other tone.
No, he's not on another call.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, you got to be careful about supplanting. And I'd want to look more closely. I have not looked at the issue of whether or not you can do that in the short term. So most, most grants you cannot supplant.
Meaning? Is this supplanting?
So if you, if you have a specific, if you want to, I haven't looked at the question, though. So with this grant, I'm not sure if you can or you cannot.
So Vin, Vin, the question is, is that, so we have the JAG grant, a $20,000 JAG grant. There is a, the server costs $52,000, $53,000, whatever it is. So the difference, what they want to do is, is to make a motion to use the funds that are allocated for the new building to offset the cost of the server. And it almost sounds like supplanting to me, because that's, that's an allocated fund for the, for the building. You can't use, you can't purchase something using funds that are already allocated for a specific item.
Well, well, isn't there money in the new building for...
For the new server.
For technology. But, but that's, like I said, it's, it's allocated for the new building. I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a supplanting position.
The JAG grant is specific to a specific project?
But, but it is eventually going to go into the new building.
It's, it's, it would start at the old building and then move to the new building.
But it's, it's for, for a...
For PD.
Yeah, right. But for a specific item that is movable.
Correct.
So, right. So it's like I'm buying it today. I don't have to discard it. I can take it into the new building tomorrow.
Correct.
And then what, where would this, the concern of supplanting comes from where, Chief?
Well, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because they said that they're going to use already allocated funds that are for the new building. I wanted, and we're putting the item in the, the old building and then eventually moving it into the new building.
Right. So, but you'd be using new funds for purposes of moving the, the system rather than purchasing the system?
No, Vin, what's happening is, is we're going to buy something now that we need right now that is going to also be utilized in the new building, instead of having to buy another new server when we're in that new building. So we're pre-purchasing it to be utilized early, because it's necessary now. But it will be utilized and would replace what we would have bought anyway in that new building.
Right. But, so you're buying it today using the JAG grant?
Correct. A portion of...
Because you don't still have $33,000.
We're building a...
Yeah, the JAG grant only covers a portion of the server.
Chief, what does the server support?
Okay.
So you're, we're short about $30,000.
$33,000.
Okay.
And so the funding will come out of the project funds.
What does the server support?
Well, you would, you would, you would need to, is there a match on the grant? That, because you're short anyway.
No.
You're not supplanting.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good one. I'm going to use supplanting.
You're short anyway, so I think you're fine. But I, I would like to take a look at it before you commit yourself.
Did you hear, did you hear that?
You said he wants to take a look at it before...
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure.
We need to get this done...
Yeah, we do.
Soon, correct?
Correct.
Vin, if you had, if you had to... Can I just ask one? Oh, please, go. I might have a workaround, maybe. What is that support?
Okay. So the NextGen server supports our CAD, our computer aided dispatch, our records management system, or property...
Dispatch is part of communications, right?
Correct.
Can we fit it in under the communications, see if we're under budget on the communications, and then just keep it away from the Police Department?
Vin, how do you feel about that?
Well, again, I, I think the, the issue, and again, I'm just, I just started some quick research on it, and I'm looking at the, the program guidelines. And the concern seems to be more about using the grant monies to supplant something else rather than adding monies to the grant monies.
Okay.
Because you're not supplanting if you're adding to. You're supplanting if you're using the grant monies to offset another local purpose.
Gotcha. Okay.
We're not using a grant at all in, in communications, correct?
Hopefully so.
Well, we, we had already for the radios, but the system... Yeah.
Okay. So, so there's a little clause in here, and I don't know if this applies to it, but it says, purchases, contracts, and overtime expenditures incurred prior to the grant period's start date are ineligible for grant reimbursement.
Correct.
So the start date has to be on the grant award documents. The effective date of the notice is February 1st of 2022. So...
Two months. So we can't use the communications.
So are we issuing the purchase order on February 1st, 2022?
We have to wait, we have to wait for that, that date, is my understanding of the...
Okay. So we can't do this until February 1st of 2022?
Right. You can't spend, you can't buy anything until after February 1st.
And there's, there's a 50, 50% upfront, and then 50% when the, the project is completed.
Right. So we can't buy it right now, any time?
Yes.
So we have to make, we have to finalize this now, or can we get a legal decision that might...
The only important part of that is, my grant is going in by the end of the week, so...
That's right.
If you're not, if you're not going to commit to that for the February, in theory, I understand where you're going, then when I put the, if I miss out on the grant date, we lose the $20,000.
So WG, lovely.
It's specific to the product item, the serial number, and stuff like that.
Same question I had earlier. Do you need an LOI, like a letter of intent, that we're going to appropriate this, or...
It's all within my grant. I'm all set. It's just I, the funds are going to be guaranteed for the project. They always are for the JAG grants. But it's specific item listed that fits within those grant items, and technology is one of them, computers and servers. So we're going to be approved for those funds for the $20,000 for the server.
Okay.
But if we don't do the server down the line, then we lose that $20,000. We can't allocate it to something else afterwards.
Gotcha.
Just so you're...
Okay. So can we...
Do we have a certain time to use the grant money? Does it have to be used before February 1st?
No, you don't get the money until February 1st.
Yeah, you don't get it at all.
You don't get it, and right.
Okay. So how about we approve the process, but do not stipulate what account it's coming from? We could stipulate, and we have, we could amend it in the future to see what account it comes from. Is that possible? It might be not articulated. Can I, again, I wasn't articulating that perfectly.
Yeah, because it doesn't sound like it's a supplanting issue.
Yeah, I know some planting going on. Yeah.
I would say that's not a reason to move forward.
I think we're going to be fine. I just want to verify.
Well, you'll have time to verify, because we have until February 1st.
As soon as possible.
Well, not until after February 1st. So you're looking somewhere around March?
So it could be. The problem, the problem is, is if the system goes down, the availability of electronic parts right now is just...
Oh, okay.
Okay. That, I totally understand.
All right.
And your backup server is...
Four years old now? Almost five?
If we're using it now, we're not... If you're using it, Eddie.
Do we make a motion to...
Yes.
Yes.
Make your motion. Add to your motion that, instead of saying X account, saying an account to be appropriated in the future. Right. Is that some, does that sound suffice?
Aye.
Okay. So why don't you make your motion? Just say your motion down. We'll work on it, and then we'll come back.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a new server for the Police Department/Dispatch Center.
I'd like to have that question in advance.
With $22,000, I mean, it was $20,000 coming from the JAG grant, and the remainder coming from an account to be determined.
Account to be determined in the future.
In the future.
Okay. Is that, is that fair how we stipulated that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Secuted.
Sure. Do you get that?
Motion by Councilor...
I have a question.
Yeah, well, first...
Let me get the motion. I'll get you to discussion. Okay. Motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Code. Any discussion? Mr. Mace?
Can you read the motion again, because she was facing a wall, and I didn't hear a lot of the motion.
Actually, why don't we do that? Do you have the motion down? The clerk will, will read the motion back to us.
I'll try.
Thank you.
So, Councilor Diamond moved to approve the purchase of a server for the Police Department and Communications. That's the part I missed.
Yeah.
And the account to be appropriated in the future.
Well, $20,000 is coming during the day.
$20,000 from the JAG grant, and the rest, we made it to be appropriated in the future.
Yeah, but you have to give it specific enough. $33,000.
Oh, so in it, to not, so your, your motion will read, to not surpass $33,000. So give us a little wiggle? Enough wiggle? Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, we're square?
It was for the Police Department Dispatch.
And Dispatch. I said Police Department/Dispatch. Dispatch. That's the part I didn't hear. It's hard to write it down.
We're going to do one of those, yeah. This is absolutely one of the communication system. All right. So we'll call for a vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you, clerk. Appreciate it. Okay, that passes. All right. All right. On to item H, financial report as of November 30, 2021.
Things continue to look rosy in North Branford.
Good.
If you look at the same topics I typically focus on, property taxes, top line, 54.4%, slightly ahead of 53.6% last year. Overall revenue, 49.0, ahead of 48.1 from last year. Expenditures, 38.2, tracking a little bit lower than last year, which is good, 40.4. No departments are over expended. The report remains unremarkable.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Esposito. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Appreciate that. And we shall move on to item I, contingency appropriation.
You have the contingency appropriation for the salary adjustments for your administrative group.
Okay.
There we are. So this includes the merit increases and the salary adjustments?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize, to appropriate from reserve for contingency. Account 101, 4703, 760000, and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purpose. For administrator salary adjustments and merit increases for the 2122 fiscal year in the amount of $88,075.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Saying none, we'll move to a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Passes. Thank you. Okay. Item J, actuarial assumption proposed changes for the defined benefit pension.
I had attached to the memo, probably third page in on your packet. There, according to the ordinances, the, any amendments to the plans have to be made by the Town Council. So the Pension Committee had a meeting December 1st, and they had made some recommendations, some motions based on recommendations from Milliman, who's our actuary. And there's basically four proposed changes to the actuarial assumptions. The first one, change A, let's call it, is the assumed rate of interest that we're going to earn. This has been ratcheted down over time. Several years ago, our assumed rate of return was closer to 8%. It's come down, 6.75, and now we're proposing to reduce it to 6.5%. And then the corresponding amortization growth rate will also be reduced to 3.25%. Plan B, change B, I should say, talks about the fact that they are going to... What they're finding is that when folks reach 65 years and 30 years of service, they are retiring. So they're amending that actuarial assumption to take that into effect, that when folks reach 65 and 30 years. There are very few folks left in the defined benefit plans. I think there's four, maybe five on the town side. And... plans, I think there's four, maybe five on the town side, uh, and, uh, the police plan is also closed as of 2017, I believe, the fire plant remains open, uh, salary growth, again, bringing that down more in line with the times, uh, current assumption is 3.5% annual growth, bringing it down to 3.25, again, this is growth over, this is a 60-year time horizon, not, not today's number. Change D talks about paying off the unfunded liability, and with the town plan and the police plan both being closed, there's a greater urgency to bring those to full funding, so this layered approach, uh, speaks to, uh, expediting that process, uh, and then the, the fire plan, because it has a longer time horizon, uh, they're talking to change that to a 20-year closed amortization, and these are all items that were blessed, I just see in the minutes, they're excerpts from the minutes by the pension committee, uh, but according to ordinance, no change can be made to the plan unless it's by the town council, so the resolution before you basically is to pursue into that section of the coded ordinances, you adopt the four changes referred, referenced above by the employee plan, police plan, merit service, as referred and recommended by the pension committee.
Don't move.
Oh, no.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, who have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor, John Hallow?
It's right there, though, right here.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Well, you have it in your minutes.
It's, it's right there, Michelle.
What's ten-year layered amortization, how does that work?
The layer, what they're saying there is, at June 30th of 21, they'll determine the unfunded liability.
Okay, I got that.
Divide it by 10, and then for the next 10 years, they'll eat up that much of the unfunded liability, at June 30, 22, they'll analyze it again, what's unfunded liability, let's take that number and divide it by 10, so every year out, you're gonna have a piece, a piece, a piece of all these different things...
For 10 years.
For 10 years, then it should be, it should be, uh, to the point where it's getting funded a lot rapidly, more rapidly, that, that's the goal, because both of those plans are closed, you don't want to have them unfunded if the, if the plans are closed, so it's just layering, every year you're gonna do an unfunded liability calculation, take that number and just divide it by 10, so every year, so year two, you'll have a piece of year one, a piece of year two, year three, you'll have a piece of year one, a piece of year two, a piece of year three, every year you'll have that 10 years spread out.
I got that, and the benefit of a 20-year closed amortization, after the 10 years, then it goes to a 20-year closed after that?
Negative, the, the 20-year closed is solely for the fire plan.
Oh, okay, only for the fire.
Only, because that, that's got a longer time horizon, yeah.
Okay, all right, and then other one on, on B.
B.
Are people being forced, like, amenable to retirement age at 65, or...
Negative.
Okay.
No, that, this is what, based on what they found to be historical situations in town, they want to revise the assumption so that their assumptions mirror what's happening in reality, that's what they're trying to do there.
Okay, any other discussion? Good, okay, seeing none, call to a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, passes, thank you. All right, item K, approved tax refunds.
Don't move.
Second, lovely, uh, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Downs, any discussion? Seeing none, bring it to a vote, call, call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Approved. Okay, and item L, Stanley T. Williams roof project going to the PBBC, PPBC.
Okay, so, this project we've been working on since earlier this year, um, as we know, the, the roof project has been an item that we've been looking at for the last couple of years, and unfortunately, the high school and the police department and communications overtook that, um, so, but they had some severe problems this past winter, and so we looked at it, and we had some estimated cost, and I contacted Vinnie Candelora, our state rep, to see once if there was any possibility of state funding, because it still is a school, there, there are some school programs there, um, and what Vinnie did is, instead of going through the school project grants, where we have to go through the Board of Ed and everything that we're doing for the high school, he actually went through OPM, which is the Office of, um, Management for the State, so we don't have to follow all the guidelines, and we put in, he put in a request for $1.6 million for a roof replacement, and I'm happy to say that the bond commission met today, and they approved $1.6 million.
Wonderful.
So, now that we have that money for sure, we did, um, approve at our last meeting the architectural, um, RFP, so that can go out if it hasn't already, um, but we would like to move the roof project to permanent project building committee, because they don't have enough on their plate right now, um, and this way they'll have the project right from the beginning, and they'll start with the architect and go right through the project, and hopefully, we can get this all together and get this project done, um, you know, sometime in 2022, um, by the time we get it done, so I would like to make a mo, motion to move the Stanley T. Williams roof replacement project to the permanent project building committee.
Seconded.
Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Code, correct, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
So passes, okay, item 10, citizen statements and petitions. Mr. Potter, how are you, sir?
Good, I'll move quickly.
Thank you.
I don't want to waste your time. First of all, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whichever applies to you guys and gals, great job, we got through another year, some strange miracle, and next year, it'll be a tough fight, but I'm sure everybody'd be up for it, uh, the town's initials are NB, and I like to think of it as none better, I love living in this town, and doing the hayrides, I believe it when I tell you, I, when I just ask for any help, it, it comes from all corners, so we got it down to, if we want to have it Christmas in July, we can make it work, um, you talked to the, uh, food pantry, uh, I know at least Willie Delacammer, when he has an overproduction, it goes right down there.
And that's fantastic.
Our farmers, I don't know who else, I won't put anybody on the spot, but I know Willie does, if there's any overages, so, yeah, it can't happen just at Christmas, a lot of families in town are hungry all year long, and we gotta realize that, so Fran Murphy, I don't know, she's like, uh, the fishes in the loaves, she multiplies whatever she gets, and she makes it work, and, and they're a great bunch, so we gotta keep supporting them year long, uh, again, you know, it's another year, you've got a lot to do, and you've got my best wishes, and, uh, I'll try to behave, thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other citizen statements? Seeing none, I'm, take a moment before we go into our next, uh, portion, and I want to, for those folks that aren't gonna stay on after, um, executive session, I want to thank you, um, for all you do to the town, everyone sitting before us here, I think I speak for the council that we appreciate all you do, as we go into this holiday season, it's more than just, uh, receiving presents and eating a lot of food, which I certainly don't need to do any more of, uh, but it's about recognizing the love that we share,